Good evening and welcome to the May 11th Town Council meeting. If you'd kindly rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The announcements, I just have upcoming meetings. These are all regular meetings, Thursday, May 25th, June, Thursday, June 8th, and Thursday, June 22nd. All meetings beginning at 7:00 PM here in the Matthew Thornton Room.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Town and Clerk Tax Collector's office will be closed Wednesday, May 17th for staff training. The office will resume normal operations on Thursday, May 18th. The Merrimack Public Library Board of Trustees is seeking a Merrimack resident to fill a one-year term on the board. To apply for this position, please submit a letter of interest and qualifications to the Town Manager's office. To qualify, you must be a registered voter in the town of Merrimack. The candidate's application materials will be forwarded to the trustee's chair for the board review. Candidates completing an open term are appointed by the Town Council on the trustee's recommendation. So I guess we're officially starting the dirty day window for the open library trustee position. The Merrimack Historical Society will be holding their first annual open house on Saturday, May 20th, and Sunday, May 21st, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM at 10 Depot Street, the former PTA building. Stop by and check out the new museum, research room, meeting rooms, and all the upgrades that are preserving the treasures and artifacts of the history of the town of Merrimack. Seeing the need for affordable after-school childcare, the Parks and Rec Department is starting a new after-school program for the fall 2023. Registration is now open for the 23-24 school year. The Natticook After-School Program offers a safe, supportive alternative between school and home for children's grades K through 4, which will operate on the Merrimack School Year Calendar Daily from 2:45 to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, for its initial year. Bus transportation from the Thorntons Ferry Elementary School will be provided. As this program grows, we hope to eventually expand to the other elementaries and schools. For details, visit Parks and Rec Department website at www.merrimackparkswithanSnrec.org. Once again, that's www.merrimackparksandrec.org, or you can call 603-882-1046. Public Works Week is the week of May 21st through May 27th. On Wednesday, May 24th, all Public Works employees will be at a mandatory training session all day long. The transfer station, wastewater facility, and highway will be closed to the public on that day. Please plan accordingly. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Next, there's comments from the press and public. We've seen no one here this evening. We have no recognitions, resignations, retirements. First on the agenda is an appointment with State Rep. Bill Boyd. He must be late, so we'll put that off for the time being. No public hearings, legislative updates? Nope. All right. Town Manager's report.
Thank you. I want to thank all the Adopt-A-Road sponsors that have completed their spring cleanups. If you're interested in becoming an Adopt-A-Road sponsor, please call the Highway Maintenance Complex at 603-423-8551. Wastewater Phase 3, 4, and 5 upgrade has roughly reached 50% completion. The main pump station is going to be bypassed for the next several months. They will be moving, the staff will be moving into trailers in the next couple of weeks so that the main operations building can be upgraded. The Community Development Department has released an updated version of Town's Development Guide and Development Guide brochure. The brochure is now available at Town Hall, Community Development Department, and the Town Manager's office, the Merrimack Public Library, and online on the Town's website. The guidebook is available also, once again, at Town Hall, and the Community Development Department, and the Town Manager's office. Please stop by and pick one up. And lastly, the Town of Merrimack's Media Division, Merrimack TV, has been notified by the Alliance for Community Media that our segment Merrimack Moments, celebrating Patricia Cunningham, has been named the 2022 Best Web-Based Program by Public Access TV Professionals. This is the first time that Merrimack TV has won the National Award from the Alliance of Community Media. Prior awards were acknowledged by the Northeast Chapter of the ACM. Media Division staff will be accepting the award at the ACM's 2003 National Conference in New York City on June 28th. So that's a great feather in the cap for media. And why? I would like Justin, Nicholas, and Colin, please come out. So, I want to recognize these three men. These three men keep Merrimack informed. Whether it's Colin doing his Merrimack Moments, Justin taping shows, or behind the scenes, making sure that meetings are set up and run smoothly, or Nicholas, making sure that everything else is happening in the Media Department. If it wasn't for Nicholas and Justin, as well as Colin, we would not have play-by-play for sporting events. We would not be seeing these meetings taped on YouTube, live on Facebook, and other avenues. The Town of Merrimack would not have a Facebook page. These gentlemen are truly the unsung hero of social media for the Town of Merrimack and the Town Department. So I want to thank them personally and keep up the good work, gentlemen. And this is a great honor that you are going to be receiving, that Nick's going to be accepting in New York. I hope you got your speech ready. All right, all right. There you go, there you go, there you go.
Mr. Merrimack.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Very good. Thank you, Paul. That's spectacular. All right, there's no consent agenda nor old business, so first item under new business is the Council to honor and present a proclamation to the Merrimack Tomahawks Coed Wrestling Team for the female wrestlers' achievement at the Meet of Champions. And Nancy?
Sure, I'd like to invite these young ladies up to the front. Do you want to do it over there, maybe up to that microphone over there, which girls like to come up?
You actually had no choice. Just take the signatures.
Hi, ladies. Is this on?
Yes.
It is, perfect, thank you. I'm delighted to be able to welcome and recognize the first female state wrestling Meet of Champions winner, Emily Angelo, a student at Merrimack High School. Her wrestling coach, Mr. Brian Dine, is not here, and two other Merrimack High School female wrestlers who also advanced to the Meet of Champions, Avery Berardinelli, who finished third in the 132 bracket, and Charlene Leeny Hadad, who participated in the 106 bracket. At the 2023 New Hampshire Wrestling Meet of Champions, Emily placed first in her weight class, becoming the first female state wrestling champion, putting both herself and Merrimack High School in the books. Emily, who's been wrestling since she was a young child, is a junior at Merrimack High School and a member of the Merrimack Tomahawks Coed Wrestling Team. It's important to note that most of the girls that made it to the Meet of Champions do not wrestle other girls all season, only boys. So to get there, they have to wrestle the boys. The girls' division at the Meet of Champions was held alongside the boys, the coed division, and the girls that qualified and competed there so that they might help to grow the sport for other female wrestlers, gave up the possibility to earn points for the coed team they wrestled for all season. Emily and these young ladies also gave up the opportunity of winning an Outstanding Wrestler Award when they agreed to participate in the all-girls division. On February 25th, 2023, Emily wrestled the only three girls she saw all season and competed for Merrimack High School in New Hampshire's first all-girls division at the Wrestling Meet of Champions in the 132 bracket. Coached by Mr. Brian Dine at that event, in Round 1, which was the quarterfinals, she bested an athlete from Muscomah Valley Regional High School 12 to 1. In Round 2, the semifinals, she was successful against a Spalding High School athlete, going up 17 to 5 when she got the fall at the 5:32 minute mark. And in the championship match, Emily took her final win against a wrestler from John Stark High School by decision, 6-5. My personal congratulations to Emily, Avery, and Leeny, and Coach Dine on this amazing accomplishment. I want to thank you, ladies, for your commitment to your sport and everything you've done to encourage other female athletes to showcase their talents and compete. You made Merrimack High School and the Town of Merrimack proud. Keep up the great work.
From the Town, we have a recognition of achievement that I'll read. Town of Merrimack, sorry. Town of Merrimack Town Council, recognition of achievement. First female state wrestling meet of champions, May 11th, 2023. Whereas the first all-girls division meet of champions was held on Saturday, February 25th, 2023, and whereas Emily Angelo, Avery Burrit, oh, I, Burrit Berardinelli, and Charlene Leeny Hadad, I apologize for that, competed in the meet of champions for the Merrimack High School. And whereas Emily Angelo, a junior at Merrimack High School and a member of the Merrimack Tomahawks Coed Wrestling Team, has been wrestling since she was a young child, and whereas in the 132 bracket, coached by Brian Dine, Emily placed first in her weight class, becoming the first female state wrestling champion and the first for Merrimack High School. Now therefore be it proclaimed that we, the Town Council of the Town of Merrimack, hereby recognize the achievements and congratulate Emily, Avery, and Charlene Leeny for their participation in the first female state wrestling meet of champions, proclaimed this 11th day, May 2023, by the Merrimack Town Council. Congratulations. Can you get this?
Yeah.
Yes. There we go, but job well done.
Thank you.
It's very impressive.
Congratulations, ladies.
Thank you.
That's impressive. All righty. Item number 2 under new business, the Council to review and, excuse me, any recommended changes to the Townwide Safety Manual by the Joint Law Management Committee. It's reviewed every two years, and here this evening is Nicholas to make the presentation.
Sure, how's it going? Thanks for having me here. Yeah, long time no see. For those that don't know, I know we have a new counselor. The Joint Law Committee serves as an advisory group to the Town Manager, and the goal of the committee is to bring workers and management together to work cooperatively to promote workplace safety. Parallel to that is our safety policy. This written document is to promote safe and healthy working environment and conditions for all Town of Merrimack employees. Tonight, I've come before the Town Council because the review of the policy is to take place biannually, every two years, and I'm pleased to report that after corresponding with Derek Martell, who's our risk management consultant at Primex, that there are no recommended changes necessary to the current safety policy in regards to laws, RSAs, and in accordance with the New Hampshire Department of Labor. So I'd like to encourage the Council to review this document or document this review as required every two years. There is one slight change that I had noticed just this afternoon. On the first page, under the Town Manager, Paul's name isn't listed. So if there is to be any change, it's that one revision. It's the very first, the Town Manager introduction to the safety policy should change.
That's hilarious.
Change the Paul's name.
I rarely worked for anybody in my entire life, but a period of time, I did spend weekends for a while at Anheuser-Busch. Annually, they would require their employees or contractors, anybody that would be working or coming to the property, to go through, I think it was like a four-hour class. Most of it in the end was all online, and they had to get 100% on all the answers and sign it at the end, saying they understood everything that they read. And that was an annual event for the employees and the contractors were whenever they came in. Do we do that? Does Primex do that? Because-
We actually give this out to all employees in the very last page. They have the sign saying they have reviewed it. If they have any questions, they're supposed to go to their supervisor or to the Joint Law Committee member, or Sharon HR on us.
When they're first hired?
When they're first hired, yes.
But not necessarily an annual review?
An annual might be maybe too frequently, maybe, I don't know. But there's two reasons I saw that they did it. One was for the safety of the employees, but two is for to protect their workers' cooperates, and they took it very seriously. So that's why I just, I mean, Primex is happy with what we do, that I-
Well, not only that, but now that's going out with a new Town Manager signature. Every employee's going to get it this time. So they'll have to review it and look through it with it, and because we do have a number of new employees in the town. So one of the things the Joint Law Committee does do is they look at every incident and every accident in the Town of Merrimack. Sorry, pull this closer. Every incident, every accident in the Town of Merrimack on a monthly basis, and they review them to see if there's any safety needs that need to progress, such as proper tailgate lifting, proper tailgate, proper driving, things of that sort. A lot of back claims, if there's back claims, how to properly lift and things of that sort, to see if there is training that is needed throughout the town and recommendations that can be made. As well as they go through every one of our buildings to make sure that we are in safety compliance with electrical codes, fire alarms, things of that sort. So it's much more than just a, hey, we meet, go over it, talk a little bit. They actually have agendas, and they go through a lot of safety procedures, and they pick one building every month to go through.
Several buildings, actually. So we meet nine times a year, and we inspect all the town, all the municipal buildings in town.
I know you had a couple you would mention.
I can go first, you want to go first? Okay. Just a couple of things and questions. On page 7, where it says, "Any accident involving injury or property damage", in the second line, there are like two dashes there? So as soon as practically possible after the accident, dash, dash.
Yes, that's basically, if you read the whole, "Any accident involving injury or property damage, town or private, must be reported immediately or as soon as practical as possibly after the accident." Pause, "To the immediate supervisor of the employee involved. All accidents shall be investigated."
So what is the dashes for?
The dashes are just like a pause. Primex puts them in for a pause effect.
It's not grammatically correct.
I understand that, but this document was written by our consultant, Primex, and it's been reviewed by their legal team.
Well, okay. On page 8, there's a telephone number there, 345-3934. Who is that? What are your questions to?
That is a Human Resources Director's phone number.
Okay.
That's Human Resource Director's phone number. Yes, cellphone.
That should not be in there then, not like that. It should be, I mean, as long as that person is Human Resources. It's easy for you to say. Human Resources Director, that's fine, but-
That's on the weekends, that's how they have to report an accident. Or after hours.
Maybe it's a company phone.
And that phone is paid for via the Town of Merrimack.
Okay.
That is a company phone.
Oh, it's a company.
Okay.
So it goes with the Human Resources Director.
So my other question on this page is also, so do the police get notified as part of this process?
It depends.
And because we're talking about reporting a death, so my question is, do the police get notified? Does the coroner get notified of an unexpected death? How does that all, does that need to be included in here? Because I don't see those notifications taking place. And then on the paragraph below where the telephone number was, it says, "Human Resources Coordinator Designee shall make a prompt determination on whether the incident is reportable, and if so, da-da-da-da-da." So what determines whether or not an incident is reportable? Is that in a different document?
No, it's up to DOL regulations that the Human Resource Department has to go through and if it's reportable or not. If it's a head injury, it has to be, a worker's comp has to be reported immediately. If it's another worker's comp, we have three days to report those injuries.
Okay.
So Human Resource Director makes a determination of who needs to be notified and when they need to be notified.
Based on, it really should say what those documents are.
Isn't that a policy? Since we have an office here, maybe we can get an answer.
Go back down.
Isn't that a policy, explain death automatically gets notified by the police?
It should.
And, okay, but that's not part of, it would be automatically done as a policy.
Right.
Not part of this procedure, but part of another procedure.
Hopefully.
So I'm just wondering whether-
Is that a question or a comment?
Comment.
Okay.
I guess my comment is, I'm sure if we need it, if it's already a policy for the Police Department, unless you want to put something like, "And following the procedures already established for the Police Department."
Do whatever you want, if you want that in there. It's just known that if there's a death, we're going to be calling the Police Department anyways, and probably the Fire Department, because we're dispatching the Fire Department. If there's an untimely death on town property, there's an injury, we notify in the Fire Department right away or dispatch. Dispatch sends the Fire Department over, and then they follow their protocols that they have on an untimely death, which is then probably to notify the Police Department. Sorry to put you on the spot, Captain. Yeah, they'll both show up, and then they'll follow their procedures of an untimely death. And we just have to report it to New Hampshire dealer. But they will do their investigation as they see fit.
I just wanted to add, actually, I sit on Criminal Justice and Public Safety at the State House, and that's a piece of legislation that came before us this year to, that it would be required by law that an unattended death be reported immediately. So it's working its way through, but-
So it's not that, so it's not a regulation?
Well, there are-
But something we do, right?
Somebody dies.
Basically to make, you know, there were some incidents of-
Consistency.
Okay. Tases where that did not happen, so just to make sure that it's in statute.
Yeah, because usually unattended deaths, as we know, require-
It reminds me of a weekend in Bernie's.
Right, and they have to have, the police have to notify the whoever.
Well, the police notify, the police notify the coroner.
Coroner, that's the word.
At the medical examiner at, if there's an unattended death, and they have to wait to clear the scene with that, after that.
Right.
But if there's an unattended death, those calls will be made through dispatch. They will come, do their investigation, both them and fire, and, but we, as the town, has to notify DOL if it's in the, on town property as a town employee. This is a safety manual for town employees.
Okay, so on page 9B, it states that, "In the event a town employee witnesses an injury to a non-town employee", is that a resident or a citizen, or is that a employee from another?
Anybody who's not a town employee.
I'm just-
Yeah, it's worded a little funny.
It's worded funny because it doesn't answer the question of who we're talking about.
If we caused injury to anybody.
Who's not a town employee.
We have to, they have to report it.
Well, maybe you could say that better.
I ought to say to anybody not a town employee, not a non-town employee. It looks like an employee of a different town, they'd have to report it, or whatever.
Works either way for me, but I-
Okay, so on page 10, Part B, exposure to infectious or contagious diseases. Under A, it lists HIV or hepatitis B. So does the town use a listing for this? Or are they using the listing of reportable infectious diseases that's determined by the Department of Health and Human Services? Because there's four forms of hep. Not to mention a whole listing of reportable diseases.
I'd imagine that that's just a list of examples.
Maybe we ought to take it out and just reference back to the state of New Hampshire's reportable infectious diseases.
Right there in that A paragraph.
A paragraph.
Yep. And also, somewhere in there, it should state how that's going to happen, because there are forms available to do that. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Nancy.
I just was wondering, is this document specific, was made specifically for us? Or is it sort of a generic document that other places are using as well? Is that, a lot of the questions that we have, if it's just specific to us, then, you know, I'm just wondering if other people are using it and don't have the same questions?
I bet it's a generic.
So it's satisfactory to other places, and Primex isn't? Yes, I wonder, thank you.
Okay, and when we get to that whole section where you start talking about safety equipment that's needed, et cetera, the one thing that's not included is what the prevention is for folks who are mowing, hiking through the woods, whatever, because what's on the list of reportable diseases are all of the tick-borne or casidial, and then some, such as Lyme, et cetera, that you would be taking preventive actions for when you're doing those activities. So say you had somebody that was mowing, you know, tall grasses, weed whacking, whatever, they would need to do some preventive measures to avoid contact with ticks and tick bites. And that whole section is listing, wear your safety glasses, wear this, wear that.
Which page is this on, Paul?
Of course, I already flipped it.
Section H 25?
That's not personal protective equipment, is it?
Yeah, there is no section for-
Page 25.
Yeah, well-
If that's where it's at.
Yeah, there's several, but it doesn't list that particular issue. Yeah, but it doesn't go into, it goes by, it goes listing for different PPE for different types of exposure, but there's nothing there for anything that's tick-borne or infectious diseases other than wearing a mask and a shield. So something to think about.
Well, today, it says the department head and/or supervisor should be responsible for identifying and providing appropriate PPE. So they would, is that what you were just saying?
Yeah. Okay. Well, it spells it out in other places, which is why it doesn't spell this one out.
I think it may have been just more general to cover a broad range of things, like long pants and long-sleeved shirts if you're in, you know, rather than say, get into that minute kind of detail.
And then the last thing I had was the last page. Almost the last page.
The safety policy distribution?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I lost my page. I took the sticky off, unfortunately. Well, I think Tom had some too, so why don't you go ahead, Tom, and find out?
Can we go back to page 3? "The membership of your committee is made up of all these different unions and non-union groups. The last one listed there is Teamsters. Is that one of our unions?"
Yes, it is. It's our PPW Supervisors Union.
Do they have a number like all the other unions listed there?
Yes, they do have a local.
Teamsters is very generic.
They do have a local. We can put the local number in there. We can put the local number in there.
Which, it would just seem to make sense. And the, under C is the first place and many other places that I noticed, it talks about the Human Resources Coordinator. We'll do a search and replace, do a search and replace all that, thank you. On the next page, in Section F, it talks about returning all copies of the reports to Human Resources for secure filing. You actually keep account of how many copies are made and make sure that nobody makes the copies?
Those copies are printed and destroyed after they're viewed at each meeting.
It says here, they're all returned to Human Resources for secure filing. In F.
I think they, they are shredding them at the meeting. I think they're shredding them at the meeting and they're giving one copy with the minutes to Human Resources.
Not filing, I'm sorry, the, the report, the reports are given at each meeting and then they're subsequently read it, reviewing those reports.
Why would we do that?
Most of the reports actually have names on employees.
Which is why you keep them securely.
Those, those names are redacted.
Those names are redacted now?
Yes. Those names are redacted, so when they're reviewing those report, after they view the reports with the redacted names, then they're destroyed. The, the reports themselves, the reports themselves are secure with Human Resources.
Okay, so you have, you have some methodology in there for actually securing and making sure that, that copies don't get floated around somewhere.
Yes.
By serializing them or something like that. It just, it says all copies, I just wondered if you.
Yeah, everybody hands them back, who's at the meeting?
They're handed back, and those are.
And they give them to you. They're only handed out at the meeting and then?
Correct.
Collected, you've done your review and everything, based on no previous considerations?
Correct.
Okay. Um, on the Section C.
What page?
Five, next page.
Okay.
A says, the first employee who witnesses an emergency calls 911. That person doesn't render aid or do anything to see if they can stop further problems, they go and find a phone and call 911? Is that really? I'm not sure it needs to be detailed this way, but it just seems odd to me that the first person that notices a problem goes off and finds a phone. And while calling 911 is important, maybe that's the second one.
Airway breathing circulation. Yeah, but, but, but in reality.
You're gonna make sure there's no other danger or anybody else getting it. So, B is probably gonna be the first thing someone does.
B is correct. And then you go ahead and do the A, B, C thing.
I think that's there to just.
It may be just as a list of things, but it says the first employee, so if you're there first, you're supposed to go off and find a phone. Strikes me as a loud way to react to an emergency. I grant it, 9/11 is the one to call. And the phone number you guys.
Have you ever go to a first aid class? The first thing you do is, somebody called 911, that's the first thing you do.
Yeah, somebody else do it, not you. Or holler it out, or do something like that.
You're alone.
But you try to call 911.
You call 911 and putting it on speakerphone.
First you check for airway.
See if they're alive and bleeding out, stuff like that.
You do it at the same time.
You gotta be good with your song, right?
Yeah.
Um, so, so I don't know if you guys wanna consider changing it, anyway. Um, on page 12.
Why don't we, I think your question is, is worthy of consideration. I, maybe we can ask Primex to review that in light of the concerns, because it's valid.
Yeah. At the next meeting, they can bring that up and see what's.
I mean, I'm willing to go with what Primex says, obviously, it's, they're the insurance company and they want it the best way too. But, um, you know, would you be comfortable with whatever they determine, Tom? If, if the Primex.
I mean, obviously, they determined it already, that's, I'm just questioning if maybe it needs a second thought or a second look.
That's my point, is I think it's worth a second thought. But I mean, if they come back and say, no, we really are very comfortable with the way it is, after having brought it to their attention for further review.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking of our eventual outcome.
Yeah, no, I understand, I get it. Along that same lines, Section D on page 12. Is that where I was before? No, I was on 11. In a motor vehicle accident, the first thing you're supposed to do is call your department to report the incident? Maybe calling the police or something would be the first thing to do.
We're, we're talking about page 11?
D, in town, radio or call your department to report the incident.
And then request police ambulance if needed and notify your supervisor.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Right there on that first line.
Yeah, I get you.
You want page 12?
Page 12 at the top.
At the top.
I thought you said 11. I thought you would set 11. I thought you.
Again, Human Resources Coordinator shows up, she'll handle that. And then, just picky, on the last page, 51. The second line at the end, it says, we'll be required, read the manual, it's probably required to read the manual and sign a safety acknowledgement form. Page 51. Second line at the back, at the bottom, the right, second line, first paragraph.
Yep.
I mean, realistically, I mean, they might obviously do this too.
It will be required to read, that, required to read.
But in their own review of this, oh yeah, we want, nothing's changed. And by highlighting something that's questionable, they might say, maybe that does need further clarification. So, I guess I'm just backing up your, you, Barbara's concerns both, you know? And if, after further consideration, they think it's still fine, then that's one thing, but I think it's worth bringing up for discussion with them.
Yeah, that was all I noticed going through.
I just wonder too, with, with the way that the document's written, sort of generically, it doesn't necessarily say, first you must. So, it's like a list of things that I think would cover, if people didn't call whatever, not, didn't do A before B. I think it's sort of generic enough that, and I think that's why they probably don't get crazy about the, the order of things, it's, these things have to be done, but they may not be in a specific order, so.
I'm afraid that a lawyer would tear that apart.
Yeah, I don't know that that would carry him in court.
You know, like, just the example we were talking about, about, you know, call 911 or check the person who's injured first. If, if I was an expert witness, I would be like, well, did they check to see if the person was unconscious, are they breathing? Do they have a pulse? I think it, I don't know, sometimes being more generic opens up the door for more issues sometimes.
Those are also the things that you would be doing before you made a phone call, so you know what to tell 911, you know what I mean? So, I.
Yeah, so why do you make the phone call first? Is, the way this is written.
I think it's listed first.
No, it says first.
It should be after, ask, after.
If it said, here's a list of things you, what you should do.
Yeah. Well, remember, does it say first?
Yeah, that's what I recall, but it does.
It says, first call 911, it's, it's to get police and fire, to get police and fire rolling to the scene. Really is, is what they're, what they're trying to do and then, you know, it, it's, we can go through a thousand scenarios of this. If it's a DPW worker, there are usually more than just two people working, so one guy's calling 911, one guy's checking the area, one guy's checking everything else. It's very, you know, it, it could be somebody in an accident. I'm sure if somebody gets in an accident, first thing they're doing is like, am I okay? I'm okay, are you okay? Yes, all right. Notify, I was just involved in an accident, I backed up into XYZ person, please send the police. And then the call is made to dispatch, to call the Merrimack Police on it. However, if we really wanted to be technical on this, we would say, if you're a police officer and get involved in an accident, you call your supervisor and then you call the state police, because we don't investigate our own police department. So, you know, there, there are some things in here, but you did make some valid points. We will ask Primex to review, review that. Some of the minor stuff we can change, the twos and the.
And the coordinator.
And the coordinator and stuff like that, we, we can change on this. With that being said, um, how's the council want to proceed?
Well, that was my point, could we?
I have another question.
Go ahead.
The one I found. So, on page 23, where it says, record-keeping guidelines, I, I get, number one, the initial, maybe that's the initial training, the employee goes, sir. But then, on, for Part B, it says, documentation of the training provided for specific tasks, for example, proper shoring techniques, is strongly recommended using a form. Do you document it or not?
They document the training and then they document who was there, in the attendance form.
Then I think the wording should not be strongly recommended, because that gives the supervisor the option of not documenting. You know, that gave. Anyways, that was my last one, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't disagree with that either.
Yeah, I don't either. Just get rid of those three.
Yeah. Just documentation of training provided, showing text period, right?
Yep, and using the safety attendant sheet.
Yeah.
Safety sheet, yeah. Also, the training that is done there is some documentation.
Right, which they would have to do anyway.
So, taking out the line, just strongly recommended?
Correct. Three words only.
Specific tax.
For example, proper shoring, using.
After techniques.
Documentation.
Techniques using the safety training attendance record. So, you can take out that whole, is strongly recommended, because that, that gives them the option of doing it or not.
It's a may versus will.
And a lot of times, doing that extra training and having it documented is what's gonna save you.
Right.
So, Nancy's question to you, Tom, in order to proceed with this, do we?
Did you have something you might ask?
No, I just wanted to go back to page 12, because I know Tom brought up that point of, um, when it does happen, reporting it to the police first before, before reporting it to, to your supervisor. In the in-town as well as the out-of-town, out-of-town first says, report it to police, but the in-town first says to report the incident to your department, so I think the language on both of those needs to be consistent, where you should call the police first, if that's, if that's the way we're gonna go. Because you see how on the in-town, it says, radio or call your department, and then the first line in out-of-town is, report accident to, to the local or state police. I believe we should be consistent, if that's what we're gonna be doing. Does that make sense?
Yes, I, I understand your point, yes.
Yeah, because I.
It's optional in-town.
I labored over that and I couldn't quite figure out what the workflow was.
So, you're suggesting that, on the out-of-town, radio or call your department to report the incident, report accident to local? So, you want that first section to be consistent with both, in-town and out-of-town?
Yes.
So, you're just requesting to add, radio or call your department?
Well, I think, I think the language on both should be, should be the same, rather than having one first versus the other. So, like, on the in-town, it says, it says to radio or call your department to, to report the incident. If we're gonna now change that to requesting the police first and making sure the police are notified, then that should be first on the out-of-town as well. Well, it is first on out-of-town, but it should be first on the one for the in-town. So, the language should be consistent.
And, and I don't have a problem either way, but I see why it wouldn't be necessary, because you don't have your supervisor necessarily in the proximity out-of-town, where in-town, your supervisor will be there and those calls can happen. So, I, again, I don't care. I think Mackenzie's point is, if we're gonna call the local police or the state police, we should call police, local police right away.
First, to be consistent.
And then.
Then make sure your.
Notify your, call your department to report the incident. That's basically, I believe that's what you're saying, right? We don't have a problem with, you know?
To realign that.
Just move the police to the front.
Yeah, and not only that, from an employee standpoint, if you have one workflow, it makes it easier to remember what you're supposed to do, versus, oh, I have to remember this versus that.
In-town should list, request police, ambulance if needed.
No, no, it's request police. I guess ambulance.
An ambulance if needed, sure.
Yeah, if needed, right, that whole thing needs to go upfront. Because when you notify, we should notify dispatch.
Yeah.
So, you notify dispatch, and of course, first question's out of dispatch's mouth. I put you on the spot again, Captain, is, is there a need of, is anybody hurt, right? And then they would roll. So, yes, that would be part of it. So, yes, move, request police, ambulance if needed, radio or call your department to report the incident and notify your supervisor.
Perfect.
Correct. Thank you.
So, should we wait for corrections or?
No, not from my, I mean, I'm willing to believe that they'll make adjustments that are appropriate.
Do we have to sign off on this at some point? Is that, or we just?
No, we just have to review it.
Motion to accept, well, we don't know where we're accepting yet.
Well, we would if we're saying, some of the changes we've done, but the ones left over are the ones we're gonna ask Primex to reconsider.
Right.
And they will change it if, in fact, they determine to reconsider.
Yes, page five, page five is a, is one of those, that we're gonna ask Primus to reconsider the order.
So, we could have a motion to accept, um, based on the reconsideration of section, whatever it is.
And I could let you know how it is and then we could just put it in. With the following.
I'm okay with that.
Move the, uh, move the town of Merrimack Safety Manual with the before-mentioned adjustments and, and changes, um, and bring back, if needed, bring back the, the Section Five, uh, which talks about ordering or inform the council of how the, how the, uh, Section Five was completed. No, it's the page five.
Page five.
Page five.
And that's relative to the.
It's the first employee who witnessed the emergency, call 911.
Calls 911.
Right.
Part of Section C.
So, that would be the.
Section C, page five.
Part for Primex.
Yeah, if they think it's appropriate, then.
It would be the same.
For the liability companies, so.
Right. But if they were to change it.
Do this with practical.
But if they were to change it, then that would automatically be done.
We'd bring, yes, it would automatically be done. If they say, change the order to XYZ, and we'll just bring it back and say, hey, you know.
This is what's been done.
We, we, we completed it, we sent it up to Primex, this is, we've changed it or we haven't changed it, if it's okay with the council.
So, you need that motion to accept that?
Yeah, sure.
So, I make a motion that Paul just said.
I was just, I was just gonna say that. All right, so you want me to try to repeat that?
Oh, yeah.
All right, um, the, the council to accept the Town of Merrimack Safety Manual, um, and with the changes that were discussed, as well as checking out Section C, page five, with Primex to see about the ordering, and for the town manager to bring back.
Any significant changes.
Any significant changes that Primex felt that needed to be made.
That's my motion, yeah.
Okay. I'm glad we had telephases.
All right, motion by Tom Tanez, second is by Nancy Murphy. Any further discussion on the motion? None? I'll call the question, all those in favor, motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstained? Six, one, zero, Barbara, negative. All right, thanks, Nicholas.
Thank you.
Good work, Tom.
Yeah. All right, item none, number three under new business. Council to consider the request to withdraw and expend $375,000 from the Daniel Webster Highway Capital Reserve Fund for the treatment slash paving of a section of Daniel Webster Highway from Greeley Street to the entry, uh, the light at Rite Aid Plaza. Tom is coming up to speak to us about this. Hello?
You know what I mean?
We're ready. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I was trying to see somebody might be coming here and I was just sending them a reminder, yep. Sorry about that, Don. Yep. Good evening. I didn't know you were waiting for me.
So periodically, we've had this special fund set up for Daniel Webster Highway, which we address the paving issues and whatever along Daniel Webster Highway. This section of Daniel Webster Highway is from Greeley Street up to where the Rite Aid light is, it's about seventy-one hundred feet. I would have liked to have done more, but with the monies that I have that were allocated at this point in time, that's as far as I can go. So what we want to do, this, let me back up, pavement only lasts for so long. And if you look at the red curve, it comes down, and when you get to a certain point, it rapidly decreases, if you remember your math and all of your curves. And then when you get down below, you have to basically rebuild the road. So we've been harping for a number of years whenever I come in for paving, keep the good roads good. And that's not intuitive to a lot of people. But the reason why, if you can see this curve, once you go beyond that point and you start down, you're in a steep slide really quickly. So what we've tried to do with Daniel Webster and with a lot of other towns is to do pavement preservation. And you've seen a lot of the crack sealing lately, which is ugly, I get that. But water is not our friend when we are talking about paving. So we do the crack sealing, it keeps the water out, and it gives us another three to five years. And if you look at this curve, basically at about year twelve, thirteen, depends on the traffic. We've got sixteen thousand cars a day on Daniel Webster, so you have to take all of that into account. This curve might not fit exactly for that road. So every so many years, if you do a treatment, what it does is it brings that curve back up. It gives you more time for little monies. So this year, instead of doing the, we're going to do crack sealing because we have to do the crack sealing, we're going to try a different type of treatment on this road. The state has actually done it from Greeley all the way down to the Nashua City Line that's been there for years, and it's been working well. So we are going to take that same treatment and bring it forward and bring it from Greeley and start working our way up. Because our, that section of pavement was done in two thousand and eleven, so we're working on twelve, thirteen years old. We're at that sweet spot right now. So pavement preservation is a way to do a long-term strategy, and it enhances the pavement. And it's cost-effective by doing these practices. So what we want to do this time is called the bonded wearing course. And that's what they did to the south of Daniel Webster.
South of Greeley?
Greeley Street, I'm sorry, yes, yes, south of Greeley Street, sorry, it's late, it's been a long day. So the benefits of this, it waterproofs and seals the pavement, including all the small cracks. We are going to do the major cracks again to make sure that they are sealed. We're also going to do some milling and take out some of the bad areas and some of the gas, the gas, when the gas company came in, their trenches need a little bit of help. We're going to do some base work, which will be done during the daytime in order to prepare for this type of treatment. This will be done at night as best as we can. We're actually having a coordination meeting on Monday between all of the groups that are going to be working on this to move forward and make sure that we can get this done in a timely manner because things have to follow right in a row. And there are four different contractors that will be working on this, so we're working. So this is a, it really bonds to the pavement. It preserves the curb appeals. So if you ever looked at the curbing or when we go and do overlays, it raises up the road. And then we've got problems, we don't have the curb anymore, our drainage doesn't work, and we're always fighting that fight. So this is so thin that it won't do that to us, or it shouldn't, it might affect some areas, but it's also high skid resistance in the wearing course, it doesn't delaminate. So a lot of the roads, you see those little small potholes, it's just that top inch that's coming off, that's delamination. It's not a huge pothole, it doesn't go all the way down. So this particular thing, and if you drive Daniel Webster south, you'll see it doesn't have those potholes, so it's not delaminating the way, you know, it has bigger holes, if it's going to have a big hole, it's going to have a real big problem. It's a quick construction with minimal traffic impact, and again, we're going to do it at night. This type of treatment's supposed to give us another eight to fourteen years. So that's why we're asking for the three seventy-five, which was in the account, to be able to go forward and to preserve this section of Daniel Webster.
And how much would seventy-one hundred feet of repaving be roughly?
I did not look at that because at this point, we would have to work with the curbs, we'd have to work with all the drainage. And I did not get into all of that. I chose this direction and.
Would it be significantly more, though?
Oh, yeah.
Probably, yes, because of the width of the road, you know, we have to do it night, night work is, it's different, we've got many lanes, it's not just a two-lane road.
So much more.
There's a lot of curbs, there's a lot of driveways, there's a lot of other streets, there's a lot to it. And there's a lot of handwork when you start doing all the driveways and the streets, so.
Go ahead, Paul. I was just going to mention, Don, if I remember correctly, all the paving markings have to be off of the road, correct?
Yes, and that's part of.
So there is going to be some grinding and things of that sort on the road, meaning that any yellow line, white line, stop bar has to be off the road for this to work because this adheres to the payments that's the payment that is down. And any of that latex paint on it, it won't adhere to it, and that's where you will start seeing if we don't get it up properly, the peeling and, but.
So so this is, it's the bonding course is not bonded wearing course, it's just a thin coating that's going on the road, or is it an asphalt and this stuff sticks, the new layer?
It's about three-quarters of an inch thick.
So it is an asphalt material, but it's got a bonding agent?
Bonding material, yes.
They go before it with some kind of, lack of a better word, glueish substance that makes it adhere.
If you've ever watched a paving project, there'll be a truck out front that sprays down this glue, so to speak. But if you look at it, it's sometimes it comes out, you know, it's a sprayer and it comes out a little little bit, or sometimes it covers. This one is right on the front of the machine, and they're finer, and it completely covers and adheres it to it.
So we can, I mean, can we assume we'll get eleven years out of it, mid, between the eight and fourteen?
I'm hoping.
So am I.
Because this is only about a third of Daniel Webster, so.
So have we put this down anywhere else in town?
Nope.
Do we have the equipment to do this?
We have the companies to do this.
Seeing you talking about a special sprayer thing.
Yeah. Yeah. The state has done it south of Greeley Street.
Yes, yes, and Continental is involved with this, they'll be doing many of the processes. We've got a separate line striping company that will come in, a separate company that comes in and does the big crack sealing. And then another company that comes in and specializes in doing this bonded wearing course. And they're all meeting out there Monday.
I want to clarify something. Most of our major paving, we contract it out. We only do small, tiny repairs with our own staff on paving. All the major paving, all the roads that you see get paved, we contract that all out, and that's part of the budget. And next year's budget, we're fortunate enough to have about two million dollars in it. So, but DW Highway is separate because we have a separate account for that road. So, but I just wanted to clarify that we do contract out paving, we don't do the paving in-house. We don't have paving machines or rollers.
We over what, we oversee, there's a highway foreman that oversees all of the paving that's being done.
Anybody have any thoughts, questions, comments, concerns? What's the desire then?
No, I think it's a great idea. I think definitely need to make sure we preserve that road as best we can. If this is, if this is going to give us another, maybe ten years or so, that's probably a very good deal. It's too bad we can't get the whole road. Is this taking up pretty much all the fund that is there? And how much do we put in each year or?
Put in roughly around fifty thousand dollars each year. So this project's been being saved for, you know, four, five, six years for this.
So the last time something was done on Daniel Webster was the year I came in two thousand and sixteen. And that was the northern end of this Daniel Webster.
I'm just wondering how long it's going to take us to get to those other two-thirds.
And we don't want to get, well, we we don't want to do the bridge section right now. We're going to skip because we're going to be working on that. We're not going to double, and the other thing we are doing that I have to do this year that's not going to be part of that fund is the Bedford Road intersection. If you ever drive that with Daniel Webster, it looks like a roller coaster. And that's because of all the heavy trucks and they put their brakes on, and the pavement was such, it was a regular pavement. So we are actually going to take that up, we're going to mill it away, and then we're going to put down another couple inches of pavement. It's an airport mix. It's going to cost more, but it's heavy duty and it will take the truck traffic. But we can't leave that intersection alone. And so I'm going to take that out of the regular fund in order to do that intersection. That intersection is ours versus the Greeley Street is the state's charge, so we split those.
North of Bedford is the state?
The north of Bedford, yes. So if you go north on Daniel Webster from there, you'll find there's a, there's a division line, if you look carefully on your pavement. That's where we're going to. That's where the state starts.
Okay. Thank you.
To answer your question, also how long it's going to take, we have the Chamberlain Bridge, which is, we're going to do some work on it with the sidewalks this year. It's in the bridge project for two thousand and thirty, I think. Thirty-two. Then we have the Babuza Brook Bridge, which basically is going to take us from Babuza Lake Road to Twin Bridge Road. So we'll only have from Twin Bridge Road out to Bedford Road left to pave this. And we'll have to look during the budget process to put more money into this capital reserve fund if this product works out as well as it says it is. To get that portion of it done.
And what did the state do there? So when I look at it, when I pay attention to it, because I see it all the time, I just don't pay attention. When is what? Tell me later. I just wonder how old it is, how long it's been.
Probably six or seven years, I'm guessing.
Yeah, it's in good shape.
Yeah, because I don't.
I don't remember it being done.
It was the first time they ever used that process, the state. They tried it out there.
We were an experiment, huh?
They were, they experimented there, yes.
They love Merrimack.
Their section of road.
Classic.
It is. All right, it's a pleasure.
I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you, Andy.
Move to withdraw and expand three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars from the Daniel Webster Highway Capital Reserve Fund for the treatment paving of a section of Daniel Webster Highway and authorize town manager to sign all the necessary documentation.
By Andy, seconded by Barbara. Like to further discussion motion. See no one? Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstaining? Seven, zero, zero. If you're Don, don't go away.
Yes.
Number four under new business, the council to consider the request to withdraw and expend a hundred and thirty thousand dollars from the road infrastructure Capital Reserve Fund for various drainage improvements on South Babuza Lake Road. So you're up.
I came before the board several years ago with a similar project, except it has grown. This is something I've wanted to do before, we need to do the drainage in this area before we do the paving. Three years ago, we were getting ready to do the paving, and then it was last on the list and got bumped off the list. And then next year was on the list and got bumped off the list. This year it's on the list and it's going to stay on the list. But I need to get the drainage done now. I didn't do the drainage before because I didn't want to have people, I mean, it's bad enough riding on the road to have all of this all ripped up for that long a time. So there's actually three phases on this, and this South Babuza Lake Road, it's from the town line of Amherst all the way up to Babuza Lake, we're going to do that whole stretch, and it needs it. This is getting to be a very busy road if you travel up through there. There's been a lot of subdivisions and whatnot. So that part one of this is down in the lowlands, just past, just into the town of Merrimack, just over the town line. There are three concrete culverts. They are in failure. Couple of them aren't working at all, and I would like to replace them with some concrete and up them one size, which I'm allowed to do. So these are three-foot culverts, they act independently, they work independently. And I'm going to keep them right where they're at, just as they are. I'm just going to change them to a concrete and raise them up to a four-foot to be able to have a better flow-through. So that's part one. So I have been working, we are going to, in order to do this, we're going to need to close the road. I've been talking with the town of Amherst yesterday, which there, as long as we do this in the summer, no school buses, nothing. So there's certain timeframes that we will be dealing with this. But I've started the process of talking with Amherst and talking with the fire chief and whatnot to, because there's one subdivision that's beyond here that they wouldn't be able to easily get to. So we're going to need to get Amherst on board, so. We're working on through all of that. If we, there's no utilities out here, that's the good news. So once they open it up and they can get it laid in, this should go fairly quickly. So I'm hoping a week, a week and a half. We're not talking months and years. You know, we're talking a short period of time, but we need to get them in, get them out, and get it done. And the less traffic out through here, the better off. So that's this part of that project, and that was what I came before you years ago. Since then, the project has grown. So I was told that some of the drainage had been installed years years before, and it was good, new. So the section up near the Trow Bridge intersection, they hadn't done that part, so there's actually three catch basins up there and several hundred feet of pipe. And that was what I was told, well, that's what we need to replace, so I put that onto the list. Recently, since I've come back, we did some more investigation, and this second set of Trow Bridge on the south side, I'm going to need to replace those catch basins and that piping. So there wasn't as much work done as we had originally, or I had originally thought. And today, or last night, one of the crew members came back and said, there's a catch basin down here at whatever road name that is. Four Seasons, thank you. I need to replace the cross culvert under the road and one of the catch basins. So I'm going to have to increase this project a little bit more, but I need to get this done because I need to be able to get this road repaired, and it is on the list, and I'm not going to take it off the list again, I refuse.
Don, when they're doing this work, though, the road is going to be open?
Yes, yes.
The only part that's, the only time the road's going to be closed for people at home is when they do the three concrete catch basins down by the town line. All other work being done on this road, the road will be open, there'll be.
One-way alternating.
Alternating traffic. So we're only closing the road for about a week to two weeks to get those three concrete culverts in. And once they're in, the road will be open.
As well for all of this drainage for a hundred and thirty.
I had an estimate, except for the extras I just told you, was a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five was what I had. I put in a hundred and thirty for few contingencies. I've now added three more catch basins and another fifty feet of pipe. I'm probably looking at another fifteen to twenty thousand. I'm probably looking at another 15,000 to 20,000. So I probably should go up to 145, 150.
And we have? Over a million dollars in the road infrastructure capital reserve. That's the, that's the fund we're doing with the bridges too. So that, I know it sounds like a lot of money, but you know, six million dollar bridge, 20% ours, it's 1.2 million.
It's good that you jumped in and said that before. I said, let's put it into DW Highway. So we're gonna do the same type of system on this road as we've done on Amherst Road, Bedford Road, Wire Road, Pearson, Peaslee. This is also fairly heavy, heavily trafficked road. So I'm gonna try the same system. Because when I came, we did, Amherst Road was our first section of doing this, this treatment. And yes, it takes about a week to 10 days to do the paving out there. It's quite extensive. But it creates such a better product, I still haven't found a crack along the Amherst Road.
And what system is that done for the new council?
It's an injection system. So they grind up the existing pavement, they leave it there. They reshape it and then they do their injection within that. So it becomes a solid. And then they re-grade it again. So it puts the crown back in the road, it smooths it out, gets rid of the bumps and lumps. It goes down into this ground more and where you can get more imperfections. So, and it works better, especially through a lot of the wetlands. We've had roads that we tried it on before I got here. And there still is not a crack in those roads. And I'm very, very protective of them. Somebody wants to dig something up, they have to do a special treatment. Because the pavement, I look at, the pavement ends up like eight inches thick when you're doing this type of, so it's really solid and it stays. And through a wetlands area in particular, it, it really seems to work well. In the subdivision road they had done first, there's not the traffic on it. So we've been working on our highly trafficked areas to see how that's, and it's holding up very, very well. And I'm pleased with it. And then they put another three and a half inches of pavement on the top. That's why it's so expensive. That's why we do it mostly for our bigger roads.
Any further questions?
So you wanna change from 130 to 150, is that what you're saying?
Yes, please.
And you had one more section you were gonna do?
Yeah, down by the four winds, four, I can't read that. Four Seasons, thank you.
Well, no, but she also got another page.
Oh, that one was included. Sorry. There is one more culvert along this road that's up further. It's just an 18 inch cross culvert. That's what it looks like today.
After the rest of it, right?
Yeah. And you're gonna replace that pipe or you're gonna put in a?
Yep.
Yeah. Do you do anything to put a head thing on it or something to protect that so it doesn't get beat up or just leave a piece of pipe hanging out?
We can, I think that one was scheduled to do a, yeah, we can do a flared end. They, they make plastic flared ends. Or sometimes we use some field stones and pile it up and around. We do something, yes.
Protect it in some fashion.
Absolutely.
So what is beating it up? What is beating it up?
What is beating it up?
The pipe.
It's, it's metal. You can see it's a, it's a metal pipe.
But is there something hitting it all the time?
No, it's just, it's deteriorating. So after 40, 50, 60 years, that's what's happening to a lot of the pipes here in town. And all of a sudden, we end up with sinkholes in the middle of the roads.
Through three.
Yep.
Yep.
Like in color.
That's right.
So it's a natural failure in water, time, age. Chemical properties, I don't.
All right. Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to withdraw and expand $150,000 from the road infrastructure capital reserve fund for the various drainage improvements on South Babuza Lake Road. And authorize the town manager to sign any and all documents pertaining to that.
Thank you, McKenzie. Motion by McKenzie, seconded by Barbara. Further discussion on the motion. Call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed or abstained? Seven zero zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Now my fun project.
Yes. I am number five.
You've got backup here too, I see.
Yes.
Counsel to consider the request to install safety improvement measures throughout the transfer station facility to also change the location of several payable items such as refrigerators, TVs and the one central location for better oversight. That was an awkward read of the item, but.
Sorry.
Thank you, Don.
So, so as everybody knows, Don's been back with the town of Merrimack for a little over a month now.
Ooh.
Our time pass.
All right.
Time's running out. I was giving her credit.
So one of, one of our, one of her goals when we sat down at the interview was to, to visit every department, every division that she has. And in visiting the transfer station with the foreman Chris, Chris is at the table. Chris Peralta is the foreman at Waste Water. And in talking to the employees, they've come up with this plan to help keep our employees safe and the public safe. So I'll let them take it away.
I grossed area shot.
So you wanna introduce?
Oh, sorry. And also we brought Julia Martinari. He's our equipment operator three. He'll input in some of the issues we face.
They, they feel this strongly about it. They're willing to come.
I appreciate that.
And we, we wanna thank the Merrimack Police Department for helping out with the aerial footage, aerial photos.
So. So one of the first things I did, as Mr. Pocalli said, is I went around to the different divisions. And I introduced myself and here I am back. And I know you've seen me before, but you never even heard me much, but. And I, one of the things I told them was, you know, you come to me, you can, you know, complain, whatever, whatever you need, you need, I'm here, I'm listening. But, I told them, but you're also gonna be part of the solutions. So I went down, I introduced myself and we had a chat. In unison, every one of them said afterwards, can we tell you something? And it was like, we do not feel safe here. And I took about three steps back and went, what are you talking about? You don't feel safe here? This is not a good thing. So they had my full attention and they explained things that were going on. And I said, really? Okay. So I spent a little more time, couple days after, an hour here, an hour there, whenever I went up. And I watched. I spent one Saturday, I spent three hours up there on a Saturday, cuz they said Saturdays are the worst. And I come back to Paul, Paul's like, oh, that doesn't happen. I said, yeah, I, I saw it. I saw things happening up there and I, and I believed them and we need to fix this. So this is an aerial that was taken from the drone by the police of the whole site. And you'll notice that there's a perimeter that runs all the way around this whole site. That's where the residents are supposed to be. However, there's no signage, there's nothing to tell them or direct them, really. There's not a whole lot of pavement markings. So people come and they do what they wanna do through there. And quite often they'll make trips through the middle of this. There's loaders running around, there's forklifts. There's people moving equipment, trailers, you name it. And people are coming in and out and, and through there. And they're going in both directions, not just one going across, but they also come back the other way. So they're cutting across all the traffic. And sometimes it's to get to the landfill out there, the, the brush pile. And then they wanna cut back across so they don't have to go through everybody. So again, this, this is the problem. This is where we are. So at the beginning, there's the entrance, the office and the scale house, the recycling's back here and then it come around to the trash. And all these little red arrows that I put in, that's only one direction, but they go both directions. So the problem is in through here. So I, after being out there, I asked the police, I said, can you put your spy bot out there? And can we find out what's going on? Speed limit out there is 10 miles an hour. It's posted here and there. It's not a whole lot of posting, but I had them do this. This is just a Saturday, one Saturday, 819 people. I had them do it for a full week. This is just the Saturday data, cuz I asked them to pull that out special. Both sets of data for the whole week and for this, they both read the same. 85 percentile, 20 miles an hour through that facility. It doesn't sound like much, but when you're walking, when you've got other equipment out there, it's, it's a lot. The average is 12 to 21. That's the range that they're going. So they're not even hitting the 10 miles an hour. There's no way the police can even begin to enforce out there because there's nothing out there to tell anybody what to do. So we started doing an analysis. This is the recycling area. There is actually a driveway here that I'm gonna have Highway rip out the pavement out of there and we're gonna blow them and seed that. It's not used, but yet somebody came through here several years ago, came charging through here and went off down into here where this trailer is. It's a four foot drop. They ended up on their nose. I mean, this is safety for the residents. They just, you know, like people take the G.
Would have done it anywhere.
Yeah. You know, people, you hear GIS and they drive into lakes that are off the river or off the, well, that's what they did here. So it's, we've since put up, you know, some, some barriers and this was done a few years ago, but you know, these are the things that are happening out there. We don't need this. So as you're coming in, you, the first thing you can do is decide, do you need to go to the recycling center? Or you can stay to the right and we will put more arrows and more, there's a sign up there, but we'll freshen it up. You can keep to the right to go around the outside perimeter to get to the trash or wherever you're going. You can also take the left and you can go into the recycling. And then that recycling splits and you can either go to the outside or you can go to the two lanes on the inside. And, and that's fine. We're gonna put some striping in through there. Plus eventually what I wanna do is to take out some of this excess pavement. There is a lot of excess pavement out there we don't need. I don't wanna do that now. I wanna just take out what we absolutely have to. I'm gonna put some barriers in through here, some rocks, something along this whole edge so that nobody can go off that side. The other thing I wanna do is to put some, a barrier system across this pavement area. And you'll see why surely. This is the area that I wanna have restricted. This is the police car out here. If you wanna get a visual on your size and how wide we're talking out there. So we don't need something quite this big. I know we've got tractor trailer trucks. But the, in the areas where it meets other lanes, we don't need it that wide. We can narrow that out. But if you notice, people come in here to go to the recycling and say, oh, well, I'm just gonna cut across here. It's very easy to do that. So we need to stop that movement. And again, this is the area we want to have restricted. On the Saturday I was up there, they even took their tractor trailer truck, put it across. It crosses the whole area, that whole tractor trailer truck cuts off that entire lane. I stood there and watched. Somebody came around, I was standing here, I looked, turned around and looked. Somebody's coming around the backside over the grass to get into this lane.
My God.
That must be.
So.
That is 60 feet across.
At least.
At least 60, maybe like 70 feet across right there. So any turning radius that a tractor trailer needs to make, that is overkill by 10 times.
Plus if you use your MS4 hat, then you're not supposed to have so much impervious stuff.
Right.
Well, we'll deal with that another day.
Yeah.
Anyway. This is what they do. I mean, they just come willy nilly and go through trailers, whatnot. And I could have put in a whole ton of pictures.
Cuz they don't wanna go around.
Yes. No, they don't.
But, but to give, I told Nancy I was guilty. I, I go through that way.
I wasn't gonna say.
I don't speed like a maniac. I probably do a little more than 10, probably the 12 to 15 guy.
So why do you cut through?
Because it didn't, it never said not to. I mean, that, that's why you have to give people the benefit of the doubt enough. Not for 20 plus miles an hour, but for cutting through, there's no reason.
Okay. See, I never thought of it.
Sign or two, but not very much.
I've never thought of it.
Especially like. So I know better now.
So the next area we want to try to improve, this would be the outer perimeter, coming all the way out and around the big arrows. This area over here is your.
Brush and compost, the brush.
Thank you. What we would like to do right now, the ACs and the refrigerators are here. Now you have to pay at the scale house and get your ticket and then you can drop off your item. And then the TVs and electronics are up there and the tires are over there and propaines are over there. And so what we would like to do is to pull all of them together in this area where we can have people, we'll put a sign out, we will do signs directing them. If they have any of these items, the ACs, the fridge, anything you have to pay for, have it within one area so that we have one, so there's only one person that can possibly watch this. He's not all over the place trying to, cuz we don't have enough personnel to be able to, to deal with all that. I might even maybe put a little, little shed or house out there so we can be out of the weather, you know, I don't know. We'll see. I wanna take the TV and the electronics trailer, move it down here and use it as part of the barricade. We have to be very cognizant, and this is from the guys, all of these are the metal bins. Which I also noted that, and I, and I took all my, if you wanna see my field notes, I took field notes while I was out there. These are the metal bins. Somebody would come up and they actually would throw it over the top. They parked down below just so they weren't up here. We have to stop any of that type of. So these barriers here, again, we'll get into the barriers, but these would be movable. So when they need to take the metal bins away and put in new ones, they're easily, you know, can be retracted and be able to do that. We wanna put the tires down here. I was told this morning when I went to present this to the guys, the guy that gets the metal bins, he has a problem. And he sometimes goes in this dirt. And I said, well, he's gonna have to learn how to back up his trailer better. Cuz, you know, we can only do so much, but we'll, we'll work through the little details anyway. We wanna put the tires, the propane tanks, any of that stuff down in here. People will be able to drive in, drop off their commodity, turn around and drive back out. And it's not through the mainstream of all of the people. And how many people are dropping off those items at one time, probably not that many. So we're gonna have to fix this entrance at some point, which I was looking at the pavement out there. We need to do some pavement work out there anyway. So it won't be this year, but we'll, we'll do something to be able to make this entrance a little bit better.
And Don, do you wanna explain why we're moving the electronic trailer where it is because of the gentleman who moves in the forklift?
Oh, when he's, yes, when he's up at the top and trying to take the stuff down to these other trailers to where they will actually ultimately end up going out, he ends up driving backwards against the traffic. Which is not a safe thing, especially on a Saturday.
So the forklift comes out of the recycling center where the waste oil is, goes up the road, goes up to where the current TV trailer is, was right by the swap shop. Gets his skid out of there, wraps up the TVs, turns around and he has to drive against traffic coming all the way through. Now, if he's going against traffic and there was somebody canning XYZ, traffic now has moved that much further, closer to the wall. He's driving almost head on into the traffic. So as a safety precaution because of where the equipment needs to go and where it's cut, where the gentleman who handles taking the TVs out and things of that sort, we felt it was easier to put it there, use it as a barricade, as Don said, but make, he's not gonna be going against traffic. He comes out, he can go around, get it and come back right there. There's the trail as it has to be. So he's not gonna be really interfering or even commingling with traffic that much. So he's not gonna be really interfering or even commingling with traffic that much now. As before, he was, almost every time he went out and back, he was.
So all the things you have to pay for are together.
Correct. We're trying, that's what we're trying to do too, is, is consolidate, because there's a gentleman up there who is a part-time gentleman, who keeps a pretty good eye on who's paying and who's not, and there's a radio in the house that says, hey, I just let some guy drop off ten refrigerators he paid for, and he has his red stickers. And the gentleman goes and be there, this way he doesn't have to drive all over the place either, to see people dropping off, there's what they, commodities that people pay for.
Will it end up exactly like this? Maybe, maybe not. I mean, they're gonna have to, they're the ones that work there, they're gonna have to make things work, and I don't know the day-to-day, and they're the ones that do, and so I'm trying to listen and get it as close as we can, that's why there's not a whole lot of specifics, I haven't got all the signs showing up there, and all of that type thing. Um, there are a lot of signs up there. The next thing that I was actually aghast, um. This is the area where representatives stand. Absolutely not. That has got to stop there.
Well, even kids, the, the scouts do it there.
Not there. That is the lane, we're gonna actually have a lane for people that don't need to go to the trash, that want to go past. This lane will be, there'll be a designated lane, it's gonna be right through there, I'm not gonna have people standing in the middle of it. And that's right where all the bottleneck between the swamp, the swamp. The swap shop. And the trash.
Well, it can be a swamp too.
Yeah, sorry, it's late. Um, so anyway, that I would really like to move, but you can also see, this is the type of thing we're talking about. Um, they say these, um. Cones with some chains, they actually work fairly well, they can move them fairly easy. So we might try those for now, there's a couple other things we might try to do. Our last area of contention is the construction debris and the scale, we're always gonna have conflicts with the scale. Because you've got one scale, you've gotta have people coming and going over the, in the opposite direction, so. There's always a conflict, but the amount of people that use the scale at one time, it's manageable, we can, we can handle that. So if somebody comes in, a commercial person, whoever, goes across the scale, gets weighed. They will come down, and they can follow the path and be able to come up. There's a, usually a trailer sitting right here, they need to go up to the top, and then dump their stuff into the trailer. Not from down below and throwing it over the top, they need to come up and then dump it in. Then they can go back out the same way, and this is wide enough, my arrow's a little bit big, so forgive me. Um, but they will be able to come back down, make this turn, because we can make it with a tractor-trailer truck, so I know anybody else can make it. Go back over the scale, get reweighed and paid, pay, and then go back out. Again, as I was saying, there was, I wanna make sure that we get an area, a lane where the people can go out and then be able to stop at the sign out there. I put the representatives' area right here for right now, we can find a better spot. Um, I'm not as concerned with them, you know, maybe we can put them even where the trailer was for the TVs.
That's exactly what I was thinking, cause that's wide open, it'll be right open.
Right, unfortunately, I didn't get a good aerial of that area, so I haven't, I didn't tell for that, so.
It has nothing to do with not wanting reps there.
This, this area right here is where the, um, sand and salt.
Yeah, I was gonna say, where are you gonna put the sand and salt?
The sand and salt is in this area, we need to, um, that has to be covered. I went up, it has to be covered, we need to do something with that before winter. Um, so it's not there right at the moment.
Correct, I took the entire area down.
It's whole, it's all gone for now, but by next winter, we need to have some type of covering over that, so we'll have to work that out. Um.
Dawn, could you, we'll just, Barbara has.
Just a question, so is there any consideration to how uh, the cars coming in can be checked to see if they have a sticker? Cause I'm hearing from people that we still have a lot of traffic going in there with no sticker, mask plates.
I'm working on it, um, so one of my thoughts was to have a couple of really, um, weekends, probably Saturdays, have a couple extra people. We'll, we'll, we'll get, we'll get some highway, somebody that wants to put some overtime in. Have them right here at the beginning, probably have two lanes checking, they're good, go, if not, pull off to the side. And somebody will have to write, you know, write out the thing then, to be able to be legal if they're. And if they don't have the documentation, they'll have to go get it. But yes, um, it's also been on the boards for the last couple weeks. The other thing I said, stickers are, so we're trying to do the push first, and then do the actual action after.
We have given out a bunch, we're up around forty-five hundred right now.
Yeah.
A typical year since I've started, it's been around six, sixty-five hundred, so it's a good two-thirds already, already out there. And to your earlier point, mask plates aren't unheard of, a lot of company vehicles.
Oh, I know.
So it's why we ask for the registration as well as the, as well as the license.
They had their sticker.
Exactly, exactly. So much suspicion.
So yes, there, there's all kinds of issues, and we're dealing with them one at a time. So this is the area we wanna preserve for the workers. This whole area in the middle here, keep the residents out of that, they can move between the buildings, they can move between their trailers. Put their, uh, compacters, whatever, that's what we wanna be able to.
Had I only known.
Now you know.
I do know now.
But you're right, they never wear signs there. Or if they were there, so not visible, so there was no reason not to.
I don't think they would ever sign, no.
Okay.
So there's a couple different options we were looking at, you know, there's, uh, concrete bollards, and these are the sleeves that go over. I would like, like, bright red ones instead of the yellow ones, the yellow ones against the building, the other ones mean something different. I want something in your face. Um, instead of the chains, I've been trying to look at something that, maybe a tape, these are retractable, they might be better. Um, but the bases aren't as hefty as what they need to keep them there. So we're gonna, I'm gonna try to do a combination between the two, get a heftier base and be able to do the retracting. I don't know how that's gonna work, I don't know how they're gonna last, so I might just get a few, see how they do first. And then, you know, stick with the chains, cause those are simpler and easier, and we know they work. Um, so the bottom line here, this was up at the trash area, and this is the existing, um.
Yes.
Tra- uh, TV trailer, so that line in through there, so, you know, maybe we can put the representatives up in that area where people, there's a lot of people between the swap shop and the trash center, plus we want.
And as they drive in, it comes here, out of the flow of traffic.
Um, the swap shop, we're gonna do, once we get everything out of that area, we're gonna do some restriping for more parking. If I have to put an island of roses or something in the middle, I'm gonna, you know, to keep them separated, because people are backing out from the swap shop, not paying attention to people coming up through. So we need to change that flow in through there, and, um, you know, we wanna be able to do that, but once we get everything out of the way, then we can determine what will work best and put the stripes down for that. So in summary, these are everything that we're looking for, our goal is to keep the public safe and the employees safer. To keep the public traveling on the outside perimeter, to put up cones and barriers, to place the restrictive signage. And we're gonna probably call it restrictive area, because I don't wanna put do not, do not enter. You know, employees only, because there are more than just the employees, there are contractors. So restricted area says only those people that are allowed there.
Right.
Um, we're gonna stripe the lanes a little bit better, we're gonna do some arrows and pavement markings. Um, we wanna move the commodities together for better control, we wanna move the representative location to a safer place. Uh, more parking spaces at the swap shop, replace the old and faded signs, I don't know if you've ever looked at the signs, but there's a ton of signs. And some of them are in very poor condition, um, I can't do the, I don't know, we'll, we'll see what, I'm getting a cost on all of this to be able to pull that together. Um, I will do as I can, uh, remove the excess pavement for this year, we're gonna put up some barriers, like I said, outside of the, um, uh, recycling center. Um, and we need to cover the public sand and salt pickup, and I might have forgotten one or two things, but that's, that's our list. I really wanna give a huge thank you to the Merrimack Police Department for the drone photos and the speed study. This year, our Public Works theme is connecting the world. My theme, I've taken on that, is we need to connect Merrimack, because we connect Merrimack, the stronger we are. So I've been working across many departments for many, you know, the police, the fire, whoever I have to. Um, we work with Parks and Rec to be able to make Merrimack stronger, and that's, that's our theme for this year. And that's what we've been trying to do with whatever we're doing.
Excellent. Good for you, Dawn.
Please, Dawn, Barbara.
Just something to consider with that representatives' area. It's not just the representatives, the boy scouts go and sell popcorn there, so people do or may get out of their cars. So just something to keep in mind that you may need a little extra space there for when the kids are there to, um, sell the popcorn and.
I didn't know what, I didn't know what to call it, so.
But that would, that would provide a pretty good amount of space, which is nice, exactly what you're talking.
It's always a bit of a, is scary position over where it is now, when the, when the kids is there, so.
That took my breath away.
Yeah.
I mean, I had to stop. And grasp that, but, yeah, the only word I could come up with last night, at ten o'clock, was representatives, so it's like, okay, that's what I got.
Perfect.
What's that, Paul?
Um, just wanna say that when Dawn first came to me with this, I, she approached me, and as she said, I'm like, well, Dawn, bring some suggestions forward. To work with the people, which she did, she worked with the employees, and I am one hundred percent fully supportive of this. I've been up there on Sundays, I've seen people do some, Saturdays, not Sundays, Saturdays do some pretty crazy things up there. I've seen people, i- in. It's not just on Saturdays, it's during the week too. I've seen guys fly in on Tuesday at eight o'clock in the morning, and they're ripping through, because that extra half a second that it takes to go all the way around to dump their trash, because they're gonna be two minutes later. They, they're running through there, so no, I'm, I'm one hundred percent behind this. I think that, uh, with these improvements, it's actually gonna be better for the citizens of Merrimack. Um, we talk about the representative area, and we could bounce a million ideas. Um, years ago, I think, when Governor Sununu was down here, they were at the very beginning of the transfer station by, you know, the old entrance to the transfer station, that's where they put them. You know, is that a good area for it? So it will work with the staff to figure out what the best place is for that. Because I do know, and I'm sure Chris can back this up too, is a lot of residents use the sand and salts during the winter time. They're always going in there and looking at it, so it's, it's, let me go dump my trash, and I got a couple empty barrels, let me fill them up to go out, so. Those are areas that we are gonna have to look at with this. But, uh, once again, fully supportive of these ideas, fully supportive of trying to make it safer for the employees and make their job a little bit easier, we do have the camera system up there now, so we can see a lot of what's going on and, and other issues that, that have occurred. And, uh, we have worked with the police department on a couple of occasions too, when we see people that are flying through there. To try to get their license plates and send them over to the police, and the police have a nice talk with them. Um, basically to, you know, adhere to the rules, but we gotta let the public know, and that's really what we're trying to do, we're trying to do a public outreach here tonight, to say there are changes coming. We will be giving out, when these changes are gonna be made, we will be handing out flyers to all our commercial vendors, as well as.
It's only gonna take a week.
Yeah.
She do it once, like, oh, and then next time.
Figure it out, once it's done, yeah.
Right, but, but it'll be out there, and it, it's, you know, the striping and things of that sort. Some of the easy fixes that we can do right away, we're gonna do right away, some of the, the more fixes that are more, take a little bit more like signage and things of that sort, we'll get a, we'll get a quote for the signs and, and figure out where we're gonna place the signs strategically, so people can see them, and, and move stuff around, but, uh, we just wanted to bring this to the council, let you know that this is what we're thinking of doing. And, uh, we will make sure that the information is out there, whether it's on our website, hand it out at the, with, with, um, with every commercial vendor and anybody else who wants to see it, so.
And that, that wasn't on my list, but yes, that is on my list to do the, the flyer, or change the flyer.
Now, do you need a motion, or just an approval, just consensus?
I really don't see any, the council really having any objectives, objections, sorry, objections of going forward with this plan at this time. Um, you know. Really, I, I think, we're, we're, like we said, we wanted to bring it forward to the council. We're not just making these willy-nilly, we're making them for safety, safety reasons.
I think it's, I think it's wonderful idea, one I commend, Dawn. Thank you very much for going to the different departments, and thank you for the staff. I'm sure you are feeling some, at least responsiveness from someone, saying this is what we need, and you're being listened to. So I think, uh, that's great on everyone's side.
So very good, I'm on board. All right, thanks, thanks for this. And members, I didn't catch his name, Julio, Julio, thank you very much for being here. Julio drives our tractor-trailer and our trash every day, so he's one of our drivers.
So we can wave to him when we go.
Yeah, when, when you see the big black truck driving down the road, Julio waves to everybody, so just wave, he does, he does. And him, him and Ron, 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 him and Ron are, are there, they're, they're the operators of the loaders inside the, uh, the, the transfer station itself, and they drive our big eighteen-wheelers to get rid of our trash, so.
Are we gonna be hearing about your ideas about the replacement of the employee place, your trailer?
The office trailer.
Yes, we.
The office trailer, I know that you are, that's different, I totally know that.
We've, we've had.
You're working on it, I guess.
We are working on, we're, we're working on a lot of ideas that we're throwing up on a way, nothing that has been finalized that we can bring forward, and we'll be working with the staff, because the staff actually is the ones that are out there, I could say we're gonna do XYZ. The only thing that I really would like to protect is that this trailer should have not have lasted only twenty-three years.
Yeah.
We have to do something to protect the steel from the splash over from the, um, the scale. And the salts that are used to keep the scale operational, so that's something that we have to look at, and what's the best way to help prevent this from happening again, because we shouldn't be replacing the trailer every twenty-three years.
So, so we are looking at a few other options that, um, we have trailers that are coming into wastewater. And, um, they're releasing them, and we can probably purchase some of them fairly reasonably. And we're already setting them up for computers and.
Hopefully they're a lot better than what we have.
And, yes.
I've been pushing for you guys.
I mean, we're, we're trying to use the monies that we that were voted in to be able to get the best deal, um, I'd also like to split the trailer into two. So that we have an office and lunchroom type, and then one for just the scale house and for files.
But, but like I said, we have a lot of, we're working with ideas, and when we get a finalized or down to just a couple of options.
Okay.
We'll bring those forward to the council for their reviews.
Yes, we haven't, have not forgotten.
To be determined.
Mm-hmm.
Very good, thank you again.
Thank you, thanks, Dawn, Chris.
Right, um. Representative Boyd came in, but I'm gonna, I wanna make sure, you know, Captain gets done first, yeah. Um, and then if I keep going, I can see him out.
This is pretty fast.
Um, next, uh, item number six on our new business, council to consider the withdrawal request of thirty thousand three hundred fifty-eight dollars from the Communications Capital Reserve Fund, the purchase of a new comm log recorder from the police department for the purpose of recording radio communications for the police and fire. How are you doing? Thanks for being here.
Good evening.
Okay, uh, so yes, thirty thousand three fifty-eight from the Capital Reserve Fund to replace the comm log recorder software. Um, the software basically records radio and phone communications in our dispatch center. Um, the recordings that, uh, that those develop are used for things in criminal kit, like discovery in criminal cases. Um, administrative review of officers and dispatchers' performances or, uh, calls they may be on, uh, write to no requests, things like that. Uh, currently, we have. or calls they may be on, write to no requests, things like that. Currently, we have a product called Comm Log Reproducer, which is about 10 years old. At, at this point, it's pretty much outdated. It's not really keeping up with what we need. We don't have any product support for that software as well. So what we did, we had three companies come in for demos of their products, which was Exocom, Baron, and Evidide. I was on the demos with, with John Dias in the IT department, as well as Erica McGuire, who is our emergency communications supervisor. And we decided that Exocom, that product was the most user friendly. It was the most affordable. And the company itself is actually located in Manchester. So we have better product support for something like that. So we're asking for the 30,000, $358 to purchase the Exocom software to be installed in our dispatch center.
This was budgeted in the CIP. It was budgeted for 25,000. The extra 5,000 we do have, we do have in the CIP. Captain Markey, would you please introduce yourself? We have a new counselor, so.
Hi. Hi, I'm Captain Eric Markey with the police department. Nice to meet you.
Thank you, Captain. But yeah, the, the money is set aside. We do have it in the Capital Reserve Fund. It was budgeted for, it was, was something that we knew we needed to upgrade when we did the dispatch upgrades. Any questions? It's a pleasure with council.
Nancy.
Make a motion.
Jump right on.
I move that the council withdraw $30,358 from the Communications Capital Reserve Fund for the purchase of a new comm log recorder for the Merrimack Police Department for the purpose of recording radio communications for police and fire and for the town manager to, to sign any unauthorized, any documentation necessary.
Second.
So withdraw and expend?
Withdraw it's done.
Withdraw and expend.
And is comm log a generic term or is that what we had and we're replacing with this exact?
Um, what we had was the comm log reproducer. Comm log recorder is, is the product.
So they're all comm log recorders?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Then it works. Any further discussion on a motion?
Um, just, so the maintenance on this thing is 16,000. It says for five years. Is that the sum of the each year's maintenance or?
Yes.
Which, which is higher, well, higher than Baron, but it just seems like a lot. That's software maintenance or is it hardware maintenance as well?
Um, I'd probably have to talk to John Dias exactly what that would be for. I would imagine probably both.
Okay. And you, you mentioned software, but there's a fair amount of hardware listed in here as well.
Yes.
I don't know what a rapid SOS integration is. I guess that's the software, but anyway, okay. Maintenance on these things gets to be crazy expensive. You pay more than half the price of the unit in, in maintenance over five years.
Absolutely. But it doesn't seem to matter who you go to. It's, it's, they're all similar.
They're all high. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any further questions? Okay, who made the motion?
The motion was made.
Barbara did, okay. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or staying? 7-0-0. Thanks, Captain.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night, thanks, Captain.
Good night.
Item seven under new business, council to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation of $600 from the Merrimack Lions Club to the Parks and Rec Department to be used towards the camp scholarship fund pursuant to RSA 31,95B and Charter Article 15.
Pretty self-explanatory. The Lions Club every year comes up with a donation for the summer day camp. This year, they're using it to, to help send underprivileged kids to camp. Matt Casper is the director of the Parks and Rec Department, works closely with our welfare department to have spots available for kids, uh, kids to come to camp and be able to come to camp and enjoy a camp experience. And this money will go for probably a three week, almost three weeks of camp for our Merrimack resident.
Yep.
Lions Club is always kind.
Very generous.
Yep. All right. It's a pleasure.
Move to accept and expend a donation of $600 from the Merrimack Lions Club to the Parks and Recs Department to be used for camp scholarship fund pursuant to RSA 31, 95-b and Charter Article 8-15. And for the town manager to sign all those necessary documents.
You will submit that.
Thank you. Motion by Barbara, and I think I heard Nancy McKenzie second it.
I think she did it first.
Nancy Murphy seconded it. Any further discussion on that motion? I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
On this post, 7-0-0. Next, Representative Boyd. Welcome, Council Boyd. I've lost my first page on my agenda, but is here to update us on the Hillsborough County tax rate, as I recall.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize for my tardiness.
Oh, good. Good to see you at the end.
Seriously, I apologize for my tardiness.
It's all good.
Well, it's, it's not good. I made the appointment and I value, I value the council's time.
If you came in 20 more minutes, then it'd be a different issue.
It would be a very, it'd be a very different issue. Be in the middle of, uh, saying what Council Candy would be saying, or Council McKenzie, Murphy, what chief you talking about? Anyway, I'm sorry, I digress. For the record, I'm Bill Boyd, representative to the general court of New Hampshire District 12, great town of Merrimack.
And ex-town counselor.
Excuse me?
And ex-town.
Ex-town council, yes. Ex-town council. Always a town counselor at heart.
Like being a Marine.
Yes, something, something like that.
You've been in enough battles that you have that.
Maybe not that.
Maybe not quite like that, but, but sort of along that line.
So one of the, uh, one of the roles that I volunteered for when I was elected to the general court was to participate on the Hillsborough County Executive Board. We, the executive board meets monthly. We get updates on pretty much anything over $5,000. The executive board has to ordain what the, what the county, board of county commissioners wants to do to move, to move money around from one particular account to another. Sounds familiar. One of the, one of the things that we got in March was an update from the county administrator, Chad Monier. And I apologize, I wanted to have the backup tonight and I just, I just don't. There are going to be some significant needs that the county is going to have to address much, much sooner than later. And it's, it's, it's going to have an impact proportionally on, on the county tax rate here in, here in Merrimack. The most pressing need, there are three pressing needs and there's no particular order. To me, the most pressing need is the fact that we've got a nursing home with an empty wing, with 104 people on a waiting list, 250 beds, and nobody to staff the wing. And that's just, that's, that's the cold hard reality of, of that fact. The, the county has worked with a third-party agency. And that's costing the county money to have to pay. And Council Harrington can appreciate this. And Council Murphy, my fellow nurses can, can, can appreciate this. And I'm, oh God, I'm going to go to heck. I'm going to go to heck on that one. Council Healy, I apologize. Three nurses. I'm definitely going to go to heck on that one. But, you know, the, the nursing shortage, Hillsborough County is paying a premium right now for people to go in on, in, in anesthesia world, they would call it welcome tenants. In actual general nursing world, they would call it, you know, per diem world. And the, the agencies are, they're, they're, they're collecting a significant fee to being able to place spot nurses to go into the nursing home. And that's just for the, for the beds that are already currently occupied. So that's really a pressing need, number one, right now at the county level. Number two, you've got, you've got the, the registry of deeds, which in, in Nashville right now, they are trying to be creative. I'm, I, not quick aside, I'm also on the, the building subcommittee as well for Hillsborough County. And we're looking at options that may be available regarding how they're going to handle the registry of deeds. But that's really kind of small pickings because the, the second piece of the puzzle is the prison. And it's, it's challenging. It is cramped quarters. It is very difficult for deputy sheriffs to go in there, be able to do what they need to do with the inmates there, to be able to go in, cuff them, pull them out, especially if there's an emergency situation. It is extremely, it is extremely tight. So the county's going to be looking at, at a new prison, whether, in talking with Representative Pledaf Gostam, who chairs the subcommittee, one of the things that we've, we've talked about is just, you know, forget doing a, 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 doing some type of a charrette process and get right to a, to an RFQ process and start looking at, you know, what is, what is the value of, of, of a new prison, new prison right now? Does the county go, is the county going to have the flexibility to draw into capital reserves to partially fund that or is it going to be fully bonded? So we've got those particular questions coming down the road. And lastly, the sheriff's department, when I, when I sat behind the dais years ago regarding communication issues that we've had with our police department in certain dead spots, all Hillsborough County, they have dead, they actually have dead spots as well. And they're trying to improve their communication and their IT system as well. So there, it's been, I, I wish I could say that they've tried to, that, that over the years, it's been brick and mortar. It's basically been Band-Aid. It's, it's, um, it's been held together MacGyver style, I think would be a, a colloquial way to, to phrase it. So coming full circle, looking at the, the challenges that are coming up, looking at the lack of staffing, just to fully fund the county budget for next year. And it's not, it's, it's, it's in general altogether countywide. It's roughly going to be a 20% increase on the county tax rate, just to, just to fully fund existing services. And that's not even putting in a dent to make, you know, our, you know, just the compensation piece along, let alone, you know, let alone the fringe benefits. The compensation piece has been one of the things that has been communicated to us by the administrator and the, the county, county commissioners that has been severely impacting the county's ability to be able to not just hire and maintain, but retain staff. County attorney's office has been losing attorneys to Rockingham County because Rockingham is paying a, a higher salary than what's being offered in, in Hillsborough County right now. So from a front, from a funding standpoint, there are going to be significant challenges. Parlaying into that particular challenge, over the last several years, the county has been able to tap in what we would call in council world, the, the, our unfunded balance, being able to use a smidge of that to be able to drive that, that tax rate down, be able to pay for certain things that we wanted to pay for while, you know, balancing tax grade concerns and maintaining a stable tax rate. And the county has, has been doing that admirably, probably for the, for the, at least for the last 10 years. Well, as I said, that, that balance is $35 million right now. And that's for both, for both county buildings and the nursing home combined. And that's at the bottom. That is, that is really at the bottom right now. So the, the rec, the potentially, now mind you, we have not had hearings. We haven't met with department heads. They're still looking through every line item of the budget to figure, where can you consolidate? Where can you create efficiencies? Where can you drive that, that, basically, the true number is 18.9%. The 20% is kind of a rounded number, but to take that, that 18.9%, how can we drive that number down to a somewhat more quote unquote, I mean, any tax increase is a tax increase, but what is probably in, in the county side is a more palatable number. Parlaying on, on top of that, it was communicated today in, Council Murphy will soon be Representative Murphy, will be voting, will be convening at the end of the month to either approve or deny maintaining the salaries that exist in the, in the county for staffing because the county's been relying on the ARPA money to be able to maintain salaries. That ARPA money, now that we're no longer in a state of emergency, that ARPA money is gone. So there's, there's going to be a gap between what it was before to what it is currently. So the, the, the delegation is going to be voting on whether to maintain that level of, of appropriation for staffing or not. So that's, that's going to be coming up to the end of the month. So, you know, I, I don't want to paint a, paint the dire picture, but you know, whatever's left in, in our ARPA, ARPA money in the county, it's already been committed to. It has to be used by, I believe it's the end of next year, or it needs to be committed by the end of next year. So there's, there's going to be some tough choices coming down the road. And I just wanted to communicate through all of you and to, to the, to the community of Merrimack that potentially this, for the first time in, in a long time, there's going to be an uptick in the county tax rate in this community. And I felt, I felt obligated to, to notify you folks that right now, as proposed, it's, you know, like I said, it's roughly about 20%. Probably is going to come down. How much it's going to come down, I honestly, I honestly don't know. So I appreciate the 10 minutes of your time. That's really all I had to talk about. And I will do my best to answer any questions.
Everybody is feeling all of that, what you spoke to. I think it's easier for larger communities like Nashua and Manchester to absorb those type of things, but we're competing against that and losing people as well. And I'm very concerned for, for the upcoming budget cycle. But anyhow, Barbara?
And, and just because I don't know, so I'm sure others do not know either. You know, here at the local level, the citizens, the voters have got to approve the budget. What's the approval process for the county? Because do they just give us the budget and say, oh, buck over 20%?
The county delegation.
And in the meantime, I've got questions like, okay, you know, what's the, you know, occupancy rate of the jail? Are there occupancy vacancies in other counties jails? You know, is there any other creativeness going on to cut that down? I mean, because, you know, we're pretty, we're stretched pretty thin. And you know, we always have been. And this year is no exception. And it's probably worse.
Correct.
So, you know, to say the county now wants to do this, that, and the other, we don't see much action coming our way from the county. So.
You know, I mean, the, the only value i- is the nursing home, you know, for, for the members of our community that depending on their circumstance, you know, the nursing home, you know, in, in past years was, was certainly a viable option for, for long-term care. The fact that you've got a waiting list right now is indicative that that's not an option for people that may be broaching, their families are beginning to approach that topic of how they're going to begin to take care of their, of their elderly parent. We're living longer. I mean, that's, you know, the data is updated that, that shows that, you know, our, you know, our generation is because of the amazing advances that have been made in medicine, we're living longer as a consequence. So.
Question, things like what you just spoke to, make, make them aware, make our legislative delegation aware of those things. And any creative thought might be beneficial, you know. I, I don't know. I mean, it's, it's just.
I just don't.
The other I have no control over.
I don't want the county to think that, oh yeah, we're just going to name a number and everybody's going to pony it up. No, we want to see the data.
Yep. Paul? The county goes through similar budget process like we do. They have a public hearing. They go through a committee. And is it, where, where is it finalized, Bill? I, I, that's one thing I don't know.
So they have several, several reps serve on different subcommittees. We get, we get hearings with, with department heads. We make recommendations back. Budget is presented and finalized by the executive board. And then it's brought to the county, county delegation for approval. And that's the entire Hillsborough County. Though, those who are an elected state representative serve as members of the Hillsborough County delegation. And they are the ultimate yea or nay on, on the county budget.
So it's best for?
Hillsborough aware.
Yeah.
All, all of Hill, every, every representative in, in the Hillsborough County is the final.
Which.
It's kind of like.
Brookline, Mason.
It's a smaller state budget.
Correct.
Vote.
Correct.
What about the senator?
That's, um, that's a good question. I don't think so.
So it's just the representatives?
Yeah.
So yeah, so, so to Finley's point is what I'm trying to get at a little bit is if there's concerns, bring them up to the state.
Eight-member legislation in Merrimack or other legislatures, if you know them, in the Hillsborough County.
All right. Anybody have any question, other questions for Bill? Thank you, William.
Thank you for coming.
Good seeing you.
Thank you very much. Good to be here. Again, apologies for my tardiness. And Council Healy, I'm deeply, deeply apologize for my, for my fault.
Especially nurses.
During nurses, yes. During Nurses Week, yes. I'll, I'll hear it from my wife tomorrow morning. That's for sure. Thank you, folks. Appreciate it.
Good night.
Alright. Next on the agenda is, uh, April twenty minutes, April twentieth, two thousand twenty-three minutes. Barbara?
The only thing I saw was, Nancy, you're gonna have to help with this one. On page ten, the very last page where we list all of the, um, committees and commissions. Are you still doing the seven thirty seven?
Yeah.
Yeah, because they missed you, yeah.
I know that break your heart.
Nurses Week.
A good point. That should be put in.
I believe it's on the sheet that everybody's on.
Yeah. It just.
Also on, on line thirteen, it should be the Nashua Regional Planning, not the National.
Yeah.
Maybe you got a promotion.
Big time. Uh, Nancy?
I, I just, I actually just have a suggestion. It's not an error, but it's a suggestion. Um, now that there are two Murphys, it just might make sense because like on the, the page one, it says Council Mackenzie Murphy and then it says Council Murphy, but then going on in that, it just, so it's probably better just to say both, N- Nancy or Mackenzie.
Or initial.
Oh, yeah, or whatever. Yeah.
We should do first initial.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah.
We'll vote for them.
Yeah.
Good idea. Everybody good?
We don't have a motion.
No, not yet, but we're going to. Barbara made the motion.
Barbara made the motion, second.
Second by Tom.
The move as, as amended.
As amended.
Alright, um, no further comments on the minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, seven zero zero.
Lon Woods would be proud.
He would be proud. Comments from the press, comments from the public, comments from the council? Well, got to, I, because I just learned it's Nurses Week, so congratulations to you all.
Thank you.
I didn't even know that. Would have brought you something.
Sure you would have.
Trust me, I'm a doctor. Uh, Benny, further comments from the council? Seeing none.
Move to adjourn, second.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Nancy Harrington. All those in favor of adjournments signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained, seven zero zero. Thank you very much.